I'm your Welcome Massachusetts, Mr. S.S. To the Council of the Town of Berlin and the County of Horsay. Greetings in the name of the Town of Massachusetts, who are hereby directed to notify anyone who want any happenings with said town. All vice votes in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Earl Memorial School, 34 South Street in San Bern on Monday, the 8th day of November, 2021. Yes, at seven o'clock in the evening. Then, and you have the following articles are in relation to that. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up contested copies thereof as per both of the town and said town fourteen days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Airlock fails not to make you return this warrant with your due insurance to the town clerk at the time and place of holding as of four seven. Given under our hand is his 12th day of October in the year of October 2021. Berlin voters like the Margaret Stone chair, Arstok, Cockton twice chair, Christine Keith clerk, a true copy test Kevin Formen, Constable. Mr. S.S., pursuant to the within warrant under notified any one happens to the town of Berlin by posting up the test copies, thereof has town hall, the town offices and the post office at least fourteen days before the time of holding said meeting as of the record. Kevin Formen, Constable, date, October 21, 2021.
I might say we continue to set up the hall and please spread out. I really appreciate that people repeat extraordinary talk to a minimum because people may have trouble hearing. There's more people sitting here or way than usual. The first thing we need to do is make up the cash sheet that they usually receive coming in by electronic voting. We've got a little clipper there. My votes have wiped out of that experience before. We have a paragraph that will compare us to explain a bit about the whole thing and how to do it. In particular, on the backside of that paper, there's a proposed rule for boroughs, specialty town meeting. I'm going to start, before I do that rule, we're going to start with a test vote. A test vote. And that is to take your clipper, if you will, and simply, we're going to take a test vote. Each time we take a vote, I will open the voting and it will have about fifteen, twenty seconds, and then I'll close the vote. What I kind of do is I watch what we have on the screen up here and when it gets to the point where we're not getting much of anybody still voting, we'll close it. And then that's how we do, simply do it. And then we get numbers off the computer that give us an accurate count. So the, this first pick, I just wanted to do a test vote so you can see how your own vote exists on your screen. And you should see a little mark that comes on that tells you that your vote has been tam- tampered with by the central computer. Okay? So I'll hold that vote right now and ask you to vote either yes and no just to come in so you can see how it works. And then you'll see an okay that comes on if it has been registered. And I'm going to close that voting now and get the results on the screen. We have fifty-two yes, twenty-three no. Somebody pushed the abstaining, which we don't count because we only count the votes that are actually taken. And that's how it works. I hope you were able to see your okay bookmark. If there's anybody that is concerned that this didn't work right, I'll let you know how to answer. Hearing that, I'm going to pass on to the proposed rules for Berlin specialty town meeting. For this meeting, voting by electronic means will replace counting standing votes or votes by show of hands. These trump electoral votes will also be used in place of secret paper ballots. The monitor shall have the discretion to use electronic voting and use it desirable to have a complete accurate voting. Is there a motion to adopt this rule so that we can use the electronic appliances? Motion made and seconded. Is there anything to be said on the motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. Again, take your clipper. And I will open voting now. I will close the voting and we will get our numbers. We have the, we have the numbers right here. They're close enough for reading. They're leaving on a lot of all the time. Seventy-five yes, three no. Motion passed. The motion passes and the, the rule is adopted. Okay. We'll move on to our quarter. We had a, we had a ending mark for meeting. We have a lengthy thing to show some changes in time by laws that we've had to kind of meetings warrants and county reports. And I believe that somebody should explain that further as they take a motion under Article One. Thank you, Senator, on the select vote.
I move that the town, under the Town of Berlin, verify the last part of two town meetings warrants in the Town of Horsay, section two, three, inch twelve, as written in the warrant for this meeting. So I'll read to you the summary. These proposed amendments reflect a desire for future cost of delivering annual town reports while sharing and maintaining available as in Berlin owners' bill of digital and hard copy format. Warrants for the annual special town meetings or the finance committee's report and recommended budget for annual town meeting will continue to be delivered by the annual voting houses. So as Eric was commenting, if you look at Article One in sections two and three, I won't read them to you, but there's some strike curves and there were some changes in bolding language. So it's really not changing the content, it's just making it a little bit more clear. And then in section twelve, again, there's some limited strike curves and the addition of the digital copy of the annual town reports being made available on the Town of Berlin website, the hard copies can be available at the town offices, public, Berlin Library, and at the annual town meeting. Are there any questions?
Our office, who wishes to speak? Hearing that, we'll move on to a vote. And at this point, I will, I will open the voting on the motion under Article One. At this time, you can start to vote. Okay, I will declare the voting closed and we will check the numbers. Seventy-seven yes, nine no. Motion passes. Article two. See if the town will vote in the interest of the town bylaws. Personnel proceeds. Okay?
Let's see, I move that the Town of Berlin, General Law Office, Article eight, personnel proceeds by inserting the language in bold like that in section six, employment in section six, holidays. Following holidays, shall be considered, there is condition of June 10th, which is June 19th, and Martin Luther King Jr.
Motion is made and seconded. Basically to add June 10th, June 19th to the holidays under our county bylaws at the time of this now. Is there anything to be said on this motion? Hearing that, I will ask you to vote. Take your clipper. And seconded, voting above, please. I will declare the vote closed and check the results. Seventy-one yes, fifty... The motion passes. Article three. River Bridge, Town of Berlin, to go on any way with modifications. Chris, on the select vote.
I move that the town authorized the select board to enter into the third modification of development agreement with River Bridge. As mentioned in the warrant for this meeting.
Motion is made and seconded. To authorize the select board to enter into the third modification of development agreement with River Bridge and put it down with any warrant for this meeting. Chris, do you?
So Article three, number one, is extending the time running for completion of certain travel and road aid improvements. The bridge over North Brook, the intersection of Pleasant and South Street, and the intersection of Pleasant and Sawyerville. Number two is an extension to the date by which the town can purchase the plot sixty ever run for a dollar.
Anything to be said on this motion? Walter.
This, this seems like a probably good idea and I have faith that what we have selected in our group would benefit each one of my hand. On the other hand, I've grown up South Berlin since nineteen forty-six, traveling Pleasant, Sawyerville all the time. I'm a little curious, please explain why.
Steeply, go a little closer to the mic. Say, why is that? Steeply, a little closer.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, Chris, I would just ask you to explain what is the design? Why change Sawyerville and Pleasant Street? I saw lately that triangle and the old pitch pine and the cemetery there. Matter of fact, I wish they'd take away all of those signs and dump them. But they would go around there. I don't see the problem that there'd be accidents there. Why, why would justify changing that? And also, um, we have coffee with the chief every Friday morning with a lot of questions, but Pleasant Street, South Street, you're not exactly a hot spot for accidents. So what are we doing in this? What's that? Could you just explain that a little bit for me, Steve?
So basically, Walter, I think that...
Want to put my, close to my...
Basically, um, this is what we agreed to with, um, the River Bridge assentees. They would agree to just extend the, um, the date by which some of these things need to be accomplished. And, um, I think that there may end up being nothing that's done for some of them.
Should it be correct to say that these were safety improvements that were designed by traffic engineers previously, some years ago? Yes. Our office, who wishes to speak?
Walter, it's South Berlin. I appreciate that, Chris, and I understand that you did very well because I'm, I'm greatly still in the near myself. And I know, you know, some people had designed something a few years later that looks, but all I'm saying is I'm not, I do sell streets every single day and I just don't see the need to change very deal. But I'm open to hear this. Thank you very much, Walter, again.
Anyone else? Hopefully they both work.
Steve Ruffin on Brooklyn, I, I have no idea. Why are we, why are we spending it? Are you shutting down what I do? And I don't understand why we're spending it and why are we buying that lot for a dollar? There must be some bell case for all this. I had a question.
Hi, Mark Todd.
Would you like to admire my words?
Thank you. Um, the reason that we are extending these deadlines is because the original deadlines, for all of these items, these are categories that were included in the original development agreement. Um, the reason we're extending the deadlines is because these infrastructure projects cannot be completed by December 2021. We have discussed this with River Bridge North LLC and they have agreed to extend the deadlines as per what is listed in the warrant. As far as, um, the River Run parcel, there were conditions in the original development agreement. There are conditions on the town's use of the River Run parcel should it acquire it for a dollar. Um, we are having discussions with River Bridge LLC regarding, um, possibly including additional land in the parcel and potentially using it for purposes beyond what was originally agreed to in the development agreement.
So anything else to be said on the motion? The agreement already exists. All of these provisions are already in it. We're simply changing the dates. If we're done talking, we will move on to the vote. I will, I will open the voting now on this motion. I'm going to close the voting and we'll get the numbers. Article three. Anyone yes? Six no. The motion passes. We don't count abstaining because... What? Um, okay. Article four. This is about additional alcohol beverage licenses. Chris, do you?
I move that the town authorize the select board to petition the general court and inform set court from the warrant for this meeting, authorizing the board to issue up to two additional off-premises all alcohol beverage licenses. Providing, however, that the general court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the select board approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the general court and authorize the select board to approve amendments which shall be within scope of the general objectives of the petition.
Motion is made and seconded. It is the same language as you have in your, on the motion sheets that were passed out as you went in tonight. And this is for two additional off-premises all alcohol beverage licenses. Chris?
So the town only had, only has two section fifteen all alcohol licenses, which have already been issued. Um, having two additional licenses would help strengthen businesses in town and would give Berlin an advantage economically.
Our office, who wishes to speak on this? If not, I'll ask you to vote on the motion under Article four. Again, I will open the voting now. I will close the voting on Article four. And the numbers. Sixty-two yes, twenty-three no. The motion carries to the end. Okay. Article five. Um, this is a manual about cemetery commission regulations. I am under the cemetery commission and I'm going to step down for a minute so we will have a little temporary...
I will call up the nominations for a temporary moderator. Come on, choose something you don't like. Okay, Tim Hillis nominated, is there anybody else? Okay. Almost a favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tim?
Good evening and thank you. This is Article five. Do we have a motion? Mr. Abrams.
Mr. Mabry, Barre Ava, 51 Sub Street. Speaking for the Cemetery Commission. I move to accept and approve under the permissions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 114, Section 23, the rules and regulations proposed by the Town of Berlin for the Cemetery Commissions as set forth more particularly in a document filed with the town clerk.
Article five has been moved and seconded. In your handout, you have, um, for approval under Article five, Berlin Cemetery Standing Rules that will be part of the discussion. Mr. Abrams, would you like to explain what we're up to?
All right, yes. The, uh, cemetery rules that we have before us and you have a sheet that you've got that should come in. Uh, many of these have been in effect for many years, fifty years and more. Some others we created about ten years ago, as you'll see in the date of 2010. And recently, in the past year, we added one more rule which had to do with the height of monuments just simply so that people wouldn't put something in and overwhelm their business in the, in the very grounds. Um, we try to enforce these regulations. In the cases of some of them, we are not too diligent as long as people, um, conduct themselves well and so forth. We don't worry enough a lot about some aspects of them, but we have them there to protect us. I mean, things like locking guards in the cemetery. Uh, the real problem there is if some people aren't careful and thoughtful of others, we will have various kinds of deposits that make the place less attractive, should we say. So we, uh, we do have that rule and we would enforce it on somebody if they're not being thoughtful of everybody else. Sometimes we don't run out and chase every single person at heart's heart with a dog as long as they're, they're being thoughtful of us. Um, at any rate, I will, I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of them, Mr. Fyre. We have them. And also how we go about dealing with some of the issues that are related to it. Much of it is also about how we can maintain this cemetery, how the mowing can be done and so forth, the minimum of, uh, extra obstacles in the way. So we try to put everything in the vertical monuments so that the mowing can go on pretty unobstructed otherwise. A variety of things like that. But if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Are there any questions on Article five? You're going to let it get away that easy? All right. Um, in that case, Article... In that case, article five, to see if the town will vote to accept that approved by the provisions of Mass. General Law, chapter one fourteen, section twenty-three, the rules and regulations proposed by the town of Berlin Board of Cemetery Commissioners as set forth more particularly in a document filed with the town clerk. We will now open the electronic voting. You may vote now. The most exciting voter of the evening evidently. All right, vote, close the voting now. And the tally is eighty-six, yes, two, no. The motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hiba. Article six, Special Act of Closup. Scott Hawkins of the Florida Department.
How do you propose offering analysis as set forth, particularly below the whole onset funds, be closed out to the general fund?
Motion made and seconded to close out these accounts to the general fund. Scott?
These are three articles we passed previously that the fund didn't want to use for, so we turn them to town.
Anything to be said on this motion? Finance committee have a comment? Here are no one else? I will ask you to vote. It's time, you can deposit your votes now. I'm closing the voting. Eighty-three, yes, zero, no. Motion is, vote, please. Article seven, fiscal year 2022 supplemental capital budget. These are things, items that will be added to the capital budget for the house when we approve lots of, at the end of the year.
Sorry, this has more numbers in it, so I'm gonna do it on the mask that sits here this year. I move the town transfer one hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred from free cash, thirty thousand dollars from Highland Commons Cultural Mitigation Fund, and three hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifteen thousand from English receipts reserve for appropriation for the total sum of five hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars from the fiscal year 2020 supplemental capital budget as printed in article seven, the warrant to this meeting. And then at the close of the fiscal year reference in the chart, the unextended or unencumbered funds from items one, two, and five, it closed out to the general fund and for item three, we return the amendments receipts reserves for appropriation.
Motion's made and seconded. Scott, you want to speak?
There were five total items that were, that were under the chart below. It is adding a rooftop and a handler to the, the... It is basically because the other one is also a roof repair, a real fire station. And I was just up there this past weekend and saw the front buckets that are up there collecting water and then, it does purchase a replacement ambulance to the older of the two ambulances we own here in town. It is buying some hot tubs so that we can continue doing some paving in, in the town roads and it is upgrading some courts or a partial project upgrades in courts in, in the town.
I've decided that the recommendation the town planning committee unanimously and items one through four have the recommendation of the finance committee unanimously, although they did not support article, article five. Our finance committee want to comment at this time? Scott Schultz of the finance committee?
Yes, our issue with item five...
Let it close the voting.
Issue is on item five of article seven, and it's the twenty thousand dollar free cash funding component. This is, this is all related to later on, article eleven, for the basketball course and tennis courses. So there is a total of fifty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and five cents in the Highland Commons Cultural Mitigation Funds. So it's believed that the fifty thousand, which is the total here, should be coming exclusively from the Highland Commons Cultural Mitigation Funds as opposed to be tapping the free cash. And part of the reasoning on that is, you know, this is a cultural item that we now have the CPA funds, which will be voting on very shortly, that will be on, coming in on annual basis from the extra three percent property tax. So we feel that at this time, with all this official money going to the cultural funds, that tapping into free cash for digital funds is not necessary.
Is there a motion to amend the...
Yes, I do have...
Yeah?
I move to amend item number five of article seven to increase the amount of funds from the Highland Commons Cultural Mitigation Funds to fifty thousand and to remove the twenty thousand dollars component from free cash.
Motion made and seconded to amend item number five of article seven to increase the amount of funds from Highland Commons Cultural Mitigation Funds to fifty thousand dollars and remove the twenty thousand from free cash. He's already spoken to that. The others wish to speak to it. Keeps the amount of money the same but changes the funding source. Hearing none, I'll ask you to vote on the amendment, the change that the finance committee has moved. This is to increase it to fifty thousand from Highland Commons Mitigation Funds and remove the twenty thousand from free cash. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Right back to the original motion now. And we are changing those numbers in article, in item five, based on what we just voted. And I will also note that the transfer from free cash will now be twenty thousand less, so it will be a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred. And the amount of Highland Commons cultural funds will change from thirty to fifty thousand, based on the amendment that we already voted. Is there anything further to be said on the main motion already and the other items in the list? Hearing none, take your clickers, and I will ask you, I will open the voting now on the main motion on article seven. I'm closing the voting. Eighty-five, yes, four, no. The motion passes. Article eight. This begins the Community Preservation Act project, and there are several of them. And I'm going to recognize Tim Wheeler of the Community Preservation Act Committee to comment on the whole general matter and how this, how this all works and what the committee has done. Tim?
Thank you, Tim Wheeler, two thirty, two clicks for you. So tonight, there's gonna be five articles that you're gonna vote on that are gonna utilize funds that have been generated by the Community Preservation Act. And since it's the first time that we're doing this, Barry's allowed me to express a few thoughts about the process. You know, as you recall, in two thousand and twenty, the Attorney General finally approved the articles that we voted on that created the Community Preservation Act. And following that, we created a committee of seven members, Elaine Wistrum from the Historical Commission, Eloise Salz from the Housing Partnership, Julie Lee from the Recreation Committee, Carolyn McDonald from Conservation Commission, M.J. Stages as a member-at-large, appointed by the selectmen, as is James Holyoke, and I was appointed from the Planning Board. The committee initially was charged with creating a community preservation plan, which we've completed and it's available on the town website under the Community Preservation Act committees, partially. Funds from the CPA are generated by a surcharge on local property tax bills, and in our case, the town approved a three percent surcharge. And then this in turn is matched by state funds that are generated by registry of D fees. In fiscal year 2020, Berlin generated almost two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but we had no state match at that time because we didn't have a committee that had been formed. In fiscal year 2021, we generated over two hundred and ninety thousand, and then from the three percent surcharge, we received a ninety-eight percent, a sixty-eight percent match for the state of over a hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So that gave us nearly five hundred thousand in fiscal twenty-one. The state match in fiscal twenty-two will be announced next week, and we anticipate that that will be over two hundred thousand dollars, added on to somewhere around three hundred thousand again from the town of Berlin. By law, each of the three CPA main purposes must receive ten percent of the funds that are generated annually. Those three categories are historic preservation, open space and recreation, and community housing. So those are the three areas that we can propose projects that could be voted on here at town meeting. In addition, up to five percent of the total CPA money can be voted for administrative purposes to be used by the committee. So if there were appraisals that needed to be done or other technical work, we could use some of those administrative funds for those purposes. And the remaining funds may be appropriated for one of the three uses or then banked at the town's discretion. So CPA funds may only be used for CPA projects, and funds may be banked for multiple years in anticipation of a major project. The committee's responsibility is to review proposals for CPA funding, and then the committee does not have the power to appropriate the funds for particular projects, only to make recommendations to town meeting. You can act on a CPA project unless the committee brings it, brings a positive recommendation to you here at the, the town meeting. And then you have several courses of action tonight. You can approve the recommendation, you can reject it outright, you can reduce the amount, or you have the option of reserving the amount recommended to the applicable reserve account without approving the project. So those are the actions that you can take. And thank you very much. Good luck.
Always great to have a new adventure. The first item on this is an open space proposal, and we have the motion on that. Carolyn of the Conservation Commission. Do get close the voting.
Okay, it's a long one. I move that the town authorize the select board to acquire, by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain, and for open space and conservation purposes, on such terms and conditions as the select board deems appropriate, three parcels of land near the junction of Linden Street and Lyman Road in the town of Berlin, which parcels are identified on assessor's map nine as parcel forty-one, consisting of fifty-nine point fifty-four acres, more or less. Parcel forty-two, containing thirty-eight point fifty-seven acres, more or less, and on map ten as parcel six, containing seven point six-seven acres, more or less. Together with all fluid rights and easements, and subject to all well rights and other easements of records, of record, and parcels to be under the care of custody and control of the Berlin Conservation Commission under provisions, provisions of Mass. General Law forty, I don't know what that thing is, section eighty, and to fund said purchase and costs incidental or relative thereto, to appropriate the sum of four hundred and ninety thousand from the undesignated Community Preservation Fund balance, and therefore, and further to authorize the Conservation Commission and the select board to apply for, accept and expend any funds that may be provided by mass, by the Commonwealth of Mass and other, and/or other public private sources to deprive all or a portion of costs of said acquisition, including but not limited to grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth under the Self-Health Act, Mass. General Law, chapter thirty-one A, section eleven, now so-called land grants, and/or other state or federal programs, including those in aid of conservation land acquisition, and/or in any way connected with the scope of this article. Said gifts or grants to be deposited in the undesignated Community Preservation Fund balance hereunder, and to authorize the select board to grant a perpetual conservation restriction on said parcels of land, meeting the requirements of Mass. General Law, chapter forty-four B, section twelve, and Mass. General Law, chapter one eighty-four, sections thirty-one through thirty-three, and to enter in all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary to set, to affect said acquisition. Got it?
Motion made and seconded, and it is in exactly the same language as you have in your motion sheet. Is there any question on that? Yes, Carolyn?
So, as if that most important motion wasn't abundantly clear what it is we're trying to do. There's approximately 100 acres on the corner of Linden Street and Lyman Road that abuts the Mount Pesca recreation area. Most people think we are the owners. We do not. We have been working for many years off and on with the people who do own it to try and acquire it. We have finally been getting positive responses. We've actually got an agreement. And so we're working with Supery Valley Trustees to acquire this property. The $490,000 is approximately half of the appraised value. We know it's a big ask, first time out with CPA funds. It really just happens to be the timing of the sellers finally agreeing to sell it. And we will most likely be looking for the other half in the spring. Krista Collins is here from Supery Valley Trustees. Could she come up to speak to Supery Valley Trustees' part in this? So one of the reasons we're working with Supery Valley Trustees on this is in order to apply for grants with the state, we can't actually own the land. So there's two grant programs that are available to us. One is called a land grant, and one is the MVP Grants, which is the state's new climate change resiliency program. So we will apply for both. The MVP Grants pay first. If we get that, we'll pull the land grant. If we don't get that, then we still have the opportunity for the second grant. But Supery Valley Trustees is actually going to buy the land back first. And we will enter into an agreement with them that we will buy it from them. Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Thanks, Carolyn. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, so we have reached verbal agreement with the landowners to enter into a nine-month option agreement for $20,000. So our board has agreed to use the $20,000 with our internal funds to purchase that easement. It's non-refundable, so it's money that we're putting at risk for the next nine months. But it will be applied to the purchase price if we are able to get through all our diligence and find, you know, sources of funding to ultimately do the purchase. SBT does intend to do some private fundraising to help supplement town and other funds that are used for the purchase. And the reason that we would pre-acquire the property is because the landowners aren't really willing to tie it up for too much longer than nine months, which is understandable. So with us buying it and holding it, it'll give the town ample time to apply for grants. Like Carolyn said, maybe you lose your eligibility for funding if you already own the land. So this is a way that we can kind of step in and help the process.
We have a... We have a project work for the Mission from the Capitol Planning Committee. And we have a project recommendation for the Finance Committee announced. Are there any further comments on Finance? I'd rather that we should speak on this one.
Kim Braden, 75 Waldston Road. This is just a question. It doesn't sound like it, but what is the word "eminent domain" in there? Is there anything that has to do with eminent domain? Because would you be taking anything from anybody? Okay, just to make sure that...
Yeah, there's a lot of legal language here that covers many bases with the attorneys and the state and possible forensic agencies and so forth. Does anyone else want to speak? Other questions or comments? It's a lot of votes. They're voting on the long motion. You have on your motion sheet under I play. And it is the acquisition of something over 100 acres of land. And then, um, the Linden Street, you want to vote. I'll ask you to vote no. And I'll ask you to vote on the child. All right, it's close voting now. Eighty-one yes and twelve no.
Thank you.
We require two words from the jury. Total eighty-seven percent. Satisfying requiring sufficient votes. Okay, articles nine and 10 are... I used to think that the Starfish issue involved in it. I am a neighbor of the Starfish. I am not possessing these. I'm not possessing these. And we've been trying to figure out what to do. I just decided I'm going to soldier on and moderate this. And put on moderator's hat and take off the O A. And do this as a moderator. If you think I'm doing it unfairly in any way, please bring the light on. And trust I will. Five to nine is $100,000 worth of work to be done in the bullet house. Elaine Whitstrom, I'm going to be the Starfish.
Elaine Whitstrom, to 64 Linden Street. I move that the town appropriate a total sum of $100,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, with $77,483.07 from the fund balance reserved for historic resources, and the sum of $22,516.27 from the CPA undesignated fund balance for the purpose of restoring, preserving, and rehabilitating the foundation, installation of drainage, concrete basement floor, and other necessary drainage improvements at historic bullet house located at Fort Wood Avenue. Said funds expended by the Historical Commission in consultation with the Community Preservation Act Committee.
And the motion is made in the same language that is found on your motion sheet. Is there a question?
I don't think they asked any questions. We've done a full structural...
It's close for the morning.
Okay, we've done a full structural survey of the bullet house. That doesn't show on the outside. But it gives us good direction and plus ideas of what the different items need to be done to improve the bullet house and to bring it to what the town intended when it bought it 25 years ago. And so this is just one more phase. We've already completed a weatherization, just to button it up for the winter. And this is the next... We have some work being done in the next couple of weeks. And this will be the third project out of this survey that we're trying to do. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on it.
Again, we have the recommendation from the Capitol Planning Committee, and also across the Community Preservation Act Committee. And we have the Finance Committee recommendation announced as well. Any comment to the Finance? Does anyone else want to speak for the motion? Walter Vick.
Walter Vick, to South Street. I present myself as probably more interested in Berlin than anybody in this room. I grew up in this town. When I was a kid, there were 23 working dairy farms, four of them running with draft horses. I'm talking... I'm not talking 1850, I'm talking 1950. And it was a wonderful town. And I've always been interested in the history, from picking up Arrowhead down around the circle in South Borough and to working on the town hall. But I oppose this. And the reason is of the process in a way that's being done. First of all, I want to pay my respects to the person who offered it. A new appointee to the commission, got a lot of energy, very smart, and I appreciate it. The one problem is that she doesn't have a network of electricians, plumbers, carpenters, and concrete people, painters, plumbers, and whatever. I'm speaking as someone who really spearheaded every building of the 1870s town hall. And when I did it, people from around town, and I can see them scattered around the room right here, flocked in. And we took that town hall, which was in rough shape, much more significant than the bullet house, and with volunteers, we repaired that building. I took out the entire first floor in bullet hall in the... in one of the halls. Replaced about 15 feet of the sills in it, the whole floor. Coalts gave us everything we needed. Friendline gave us $15,000 worth of lumber from New Hampshire. And we did the whole thing. We should have done this. But the people who have been in control over the years, incidentally, this should have been done and could have been done 15 years ago for that. And it just bothers me that we're at this time in history, and we've got a pot of money, and oh, let's spend the money. Nobody on the board, on the commission, that I know of, nobody contacted me, nobody contacted three or four other people I see here that are totally competent of looking at that place and deciding what to do. Several years ago, the building inspector looked at it, and he and I were working on it. We were going to do the whole... Everything that this money is for, we would have done. He lived up beyond Guyton, Larranacane, raised in Berlin. He was willing to come down here and work on that. And we'd have had that bullet house ready for occupancy, oh, God, several years ago. It should have been done 15 years ago. But it wasn't. Very mismanaged. Lost people, people walked away for it, threw their hands in the air. It didn't do anything about it. It's still doable. So I'm asking you to vote no. Unlike a few people in this room that I talked to that think we should tear it down. I don't believe that at all, and I don't want that to happen. But a no vote is to say no to the bullet house altogether and to say, wait a minute. Maybe we ought to get a different perspective on this. Maybe we ought to get some of the locals in to look at it. The person that they had look at it, come up with a crisis, is top end, gets big money, fixing up incredible houses. And I can tell you the work... I looked through the estimate that he put together, and it's way more than is needed to fix that house up. Incidentally, I got to say, it isn't... This isn't historical jewel. It's hard to forge a building by different people with different skills, mostly low skills, put it together. And it can be fixed up and be totally functional for a fraction of the cost of any cost. If the commission would take a different group and do it. Incidentally, I offered my name to the selectmen to get appointed to the commission. And I hope that I do. And we'll see what we can do about looking at other views and voting on other alternatives. But there are alternatives to this that not only would be cheaper, but like when we did the town hall, it builds in the street decor and with people getting involved, it builds community spirit, appreciation for the history, instead of hiring someone to do it. It's my understanding they hired the expert in the estimate to replace about 12 foot of sills in there or something. I heard $19,000. I replaced 15 feet of sills in the town hall for zero. Didn't cost anything, and I enjoyed doing it. So what I'm saying is, vote no on this as putting the brakes on, not throwing cold water on the commission or the people that offered it, but forcing to say to the selectmen, say, look, we're going to take a second look at this. So that's all I'm asking you to do. And I'm going to vote no. I ask you to vote no.
Okay, if I can just...
Who wants to speak? Scott?
Oh. I'm up here first as a member of the select board. We have come to the second look, and we encourage you to vote yes on this motion. This sill work, this foundation work, comes out of a structural survey where you're doing an orderly process of saving that building and getting it so it can get initiated and used the way the town has always wanted to use it. So we really encourage you to say yes on that. And saying yes doesn't mean we're going to spend $100,000 with the motion. Saying yes means to go out to bids and qualify bids. And actually, by law, the lowest qualified bid we are actually required to take. And so if there are contractors or vendors out there that are willing to come in with a lower offer to do this work for the town for this money, we are more than encouraging that to happen. It would be very happy for that to happen. Nothing would make me personally happier than having this coming much under budget and be able to use more of these funds for other things. I think we need to step forward and say we really want to preserve this building, we want to preserve this history. It does have a zip limit, so not as similar as Scott, a resident of town. I have not lived in my whole life, but my father grew up in the bullet house for many years. My grandparents raised them. I have videotapes of Christmas being celebrated in that house. I would really like to see that preserved. I encourage you to vote yes.
Yes?
Paul McKelp, 119 Current Street. I also live in the bullet house, Philstone Foundation. And I'm just a little concerned with the... I'm all for restoring the bullet house, first of all. I believe history is an important part of this community. My concern is excavating the external foundation... or excavating the foundation externally. My 1740 house, Philstone Foundation, leaked like a sieve. Granted, I wasn't down slope from lead, which bullet house is, but I think that can be mitigated with a little more introspection in terms of the property. I spent about three weeks, a long three weeks, repointing the interior of my Philstone Foundation. And it has not leaked in three or four years. I get plenty of run off from my roof. And I just wonder, there are things like shot creep and other pressurized concrete applications which were used in the MWRA tunnel that goes from Berlin to Waterbridge Tunnel. And it seems to me that it's certainly more economical to unpack the problem from the inside rather than outside, because who knows with all Phil Stone foundations, they're this wide at the top, but they generally taper out and become wider at the bottom. And when we started excavating, I'm just afraid that there could be some substantial damage. And the only way to know that is probably to dig a couple of test holes. And I just think that, unless there's information that I'm not aware of, that those things haven't been checked out thoroughly. And I just think that there should be a little more detailed excavation of property and of the problem.
Okay, as part of the building survey, structural survey, the Bullet House, this is the section on the foundation. Foundation of the Bullet House was not particularly well constructed to begin with, and it has suffered over time. There are stones falling out in some places, very catching water above grade, and more than ample evidence of a steady flow of water through the cell. The moisture level has and will continue to add to the deterioration of the building in general and the floor structure, and the floor structure specifically. In its present condition, dehumidifying other small scale remedies improve to be insufficient mitigation of the problem. Structural improvement is definitely called for. And because of, is the recommendations. Because of inaccessibility, repair and waterproofing of the inside of the foundation is impractical. Likewise, mapping the floor foundation is also impractical because of the ledge under the house would interfere with steel supports, and it goes on and on. But we have had a full investigation through a very experienced person, and we have good faith in his estimates. It's not to say that we couldn't be shocked when we get estimates, but we may have some that are less. And to Mr. Bigfett's concerns about using volunteers, I have to say that the past two building inspectors, including our new building inspector, think that it's beyond using volunteers, that we really need professional help.
Dave Westroming, one ninety-six Lyndon Street. My experience has recently been in procurement, public procurement. And across the Commonwealth, we now have a procurement program for towns and cities to procure properly, so there's no fraud, waste, and abuse. So the use of volunteer labor on public projects has been reduced because often there's non-professional help that's available. And you certainly have the potential of using non-professional help for a lot of items that are not in the contract. But more and more, and I think I can back the town administrator on this, procurement is becoming, the competitiveness of the procurement. So coming up with a good idea of how to do this, we're gonna put this out to the public bid, and we're gonna get ideas from the contractors. And it can be local contractors, they can get on it, as well as someone from out of town. But we're gonna get people who are experts on foundations to look at this. And that's really important for dollars that we, harder dollars that we're gonna be spending here. We want it to be spent properly. We don't want this to take many years. We've got building cokes to meet. This facility is gonna be used as was intended when it was purchased twenty-five years ago, and it's about time to do it. I think we've got a great committee, we've got finance back in us, we've got capital planning back in us. I think it's time to do something with the Bullet House. Thank you.
Walter Bigfett, South Street. It's a lot of trouble to me to have people get up here and discover it far here as a, and laborers, unprofessional people. Again, I'll tell you, we did the town hall, Berlin people did it, professional painters, professional plumbers, professional concrete people. I rebuilt the house I grew up in, which we built in seventeen sixty-seven, the first part, but the newest part was eighteen twelve. Did all the floors, the sills. I know what I'm doing. I built a post-beam barn. There is a nail in it, except for the boards held on the outside, all more mortise and tenon and peg. I know what it is. I built stone walls. Other people have. I named some, but I don't want to embarrass them any, but they, this is not, this word expert comes from people who have no experience doing any of this stuff. You know, I talked to the chairperson of the Historical Commission the other day. Well, we wanted experts to do it. Experts, we're all experts. This was built by farmers, not by experts. And I'm just saying that by doing it differently, instead of hiring big bucks people, then again, this money here at nineteen grand to replace a sill is ridiculous. And I'll give you another example. The Historical Society, which is controlled by the same people who is in charge of a purse house that was the oldest house in Berlin. Years ago, I made doors for it, bought boards and hand plane them, put them together. It sat there fifteen years and dried out. Another person who's sitting in this room started working on it. He was discovered from doing so. The place fell apart. The person that wants to fix the Bullet House now wants fifteen thousand dollars to fix the Hearst House. We'd have done it for nothing. Also, I'm saying that there needs to be a different approach. The people offering it, they're well-intended, I appreciate it. Incidentally, this ninety-seven thousand, it could be the IFR. The total cost of the plan that was read is two hundred and ninety-seven, three hundred thousand dollars. That's the way you want to go. It needs someone to step in and say, wait a minute, let's look at another angle. Again, I want to get this done, but I don't think we should be, in this day and age, what's going on in Congress and all this trouble? This Berlin, you're responsible for what we're doing. You can't complain about Congress or the legislature. This is a waste of money, and we should take a different approach to it.
Mr. Moderator, I ask you, on behalf of this, I want to let our town council speak to the decision.
Want counsel for economy or something?
Yes, I do, please. Legal counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. In addition to the public performance and the requirements that the town should consider, I would also note that there are potential liability concerns with respect to any work that is certainly uninsured. The town has insurance, and certainly any work of the significant value in living should be insured, and then in case there is, you know, there was a problem with any of the work being conducted. In addition, in the event that someone is injured, there is liability considerations for the town to consider for that as well. So thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Anyone else? Okay, let's see if we can vote. The motion is in the same words as it is in your motion sheet. I'm voting now. We'll close the vote, and I'm gonna ask the assistant town clerk to announce the numbers. Order! Sixty-four in favor, one eight to vote, one to take. Article ten. This is an additional historical project for various ways of recording and making available more information about the historical project. June Miller, Historical Commission.
June Miller, thirty-one Baker Road, Chair, Berlin Historical Commission. I move that the town appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars from the CPA undesignated fund balance for the preservation of historic resources, of which five hundred dollars would be used for professional imaging of two inventory notebooks, and forty-five hundred dollars would be used for imaging of high priority artifacts belonging to the town of Berlin and under the care of the Berlin Historical Commission. Said funds to be expended by the Historical Commission in consultation with the Community Preservation Act Committee.
That's in the same language as on your motion sheet. June, you want to explain it a little bit more?
The motion has two parts. One is the digital imaging of two inventory notebooks that were created in the nineteen sixties and seventies. They are fragile. They are handwritten on both sides of each page, and they need professional scanning. It's beyond ordinary skill. The second part is professional digital imaging of high priority artifacts that are included in those inventories. And they will be selected because of the information they convey to our local history. There are a few artifacts that have intrinsic value, and we will be better able to communicate that value to our town insurance company. We'll have an annual review of that next spring. A digital archive allows the historical collection to be made accessible to the community and all the while protecting the original items. Digitization is standard practice in historic preservation and desirable because it expands our opportunities to mount exhibits, to conduct research, and to provide programming. The commission's goals here are to safeguard and make accessible the information our town historical collection bestows on our local history.
Finance Committee has a perfect recommendation in favor, if there is anything to be said further. Does anyone else want to speak on this motion? On this one? Here are no one, I want to vote. I'm voting on this now. We'll close the vote, and I'll ask the assistant town clerk to figure the numbers. Eighty-eight in favor, one opposed, three to take. The motion passed. Article eleven. The motion under oath. Chris Morrison.
Chris Morrison, thank you. Chris Morrison. That's a long time ago, we've no idea if there are files. That's Christiansen, Lake Dassel, Berlin. I motion, excuse me, I move that the town appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Act Fund, excuse me, with seventy-seven thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-three cents from the funds and balance reserved for open space recreation, eleven thousand two hundred six dollars, ninety-seven cents from the CPA undesigned fund balance, and eleven thousand three hundred nine dollars and thirty cents from the CPA balance reserved from twenty-twenty-two to fund the reconstruction and equipping of the one outdoor basketball court and the two outdoor tennis courts on self common recreation grounds, and to construct and equip four pickleball courts on the tennis courts. Said funds to be expended by the Recreation Committee in consultation with the Community Preservation Act Committee.
The motion is in the words that are on your motion sheet. Explanation?
Sure. So from what I understand, these courts were built a little while ago. So I'm going to confess something here. They were built the same year that I was born, so nineteen seventy-one. And for those of you who don't do math very well, that's fifty years ago. So they are really sad right now. They have a lot of cracks in them, they have mounds from where the old cracks were sealed up. And I don't know, were they ever professionally done? No. So they've never been professionally done. They really need a good overhaul, and that's really what we want to do. We want to make them better, and we want to make them really good for everybody to use.
We have a Capital Planning Committee recommendation. Are you in favor of this? And we have the Finance Committee unanimously in favor, and if you put it up, you can vote. Do you want us to wish to speak on this motion on the ground? Here are no one, I want to vote. Thank you for voting prices, and we start voting them now. Thank you for voting for this, and I will start voting them now. I will close the voting now, and we'll get our numbers. Eighty-seven, yes, three no, and we should pass it. Article 12. Improvements to baseball field.
Good evening. Mike Clark, 85 Wilson Road. I am part of the Berlin Willee Board. Some of these gentlemen over here have been on the board with me for a number of years. Our motion, Article 12, move that the town appropriate the sum of $20,000 from the 2022 CPA balance reserve to fund the construction and equipping of an announcement booth in the back stop barrier of the baseball field, Field Two, which is the center field in the back, as well as the purchase and installation of an electronic scoreboard along with necessary electrical work on self-common recreational grounds. Said funds to be expended by the Recreation Committee in consultation with the Community Preservation Committee. The only thing about that is that we're all trying to think about sweat equity and volunteerism, and we have done a lot of that over the past few years as a board. We've been extremely invested, and I would encourage all of you to consider, just think about having either raise kids in the community or continuing to sustain these facilities for the future and make them the best they can. I do have a capital planning and operations background. We've vetted a lot of the things that we've done, put a lot of sweat equity into bringing it up to speed at where it is now. We play with Boles and then West Boles and for perspective. They have fields that they've invested heavily in, including a scoreboard. We do have opportunities to bring other towns and playoffs and other activity to this field as well. And so there is some element of payback, and I think the violence will be there and sustainability per, for this act, and so it fits in with it nicely. And I'll just add too that we're in the last couple of years, some of us are in the last couple of years of our tenure on the board, so this is not only for us and our children, it's really for the future as well.
Motion is made and seconded in the form, I saw on your motion sheet, in Article 12. This is $20,000 for purchase and installation of electronic scoreboard and electrical work and all the things that I kind of pronounce in the book of baseball. Again, we have the recommendation from the Capitol Planning Committee and the Finance Committee unanimously in favor. Does anyone else want to speak for this motion on the right?
Yep.
Yes. I will be out first.
Yep. Good evening. Jim Stevens, 31 Autumn Bridge Road. And first thoughts, pleasure being here today. And, you know, you look at that field, and a lot of the stuff that goes into that has been from our, you know, a lot of people volunteering their time, their energy just to maintain it, just to make sure there's a field for kids to play on. And it's not for just the baseball, right? Like there's softball out there, it's for kids, it's for them to go out and play. You know, if you look at our town, there's really one place for all of our kids to come and play, and it's right around here. You know, one of the things and stuff is our facilities. You know, we don't have facilities like we have in some of the budding towns like Hudson or Clinton or even Bold, right? And so this is one of the nice ones, that for longevity of the people that are living and the kids that are continuing to be here, whether they're there, those are really special moments, and they can go up and there's a scoreboard. You know, they can actually see what the score is, or have their name. And just some little things like that make a difference that last a lifetime of memories. Right? But for the majority of the stuff that we do, that's all of us, like pitching in, you know, taking care of the field, you know, Mark brings his big tractor, and the other day I drove down a lawn, mowed one. You know, a lot of it is that we're doing that around. You know, but there's only so much that we can do. We do a lot of fundraising, so there's a lot of stuff that we do to try to raise funds as best we possibly can. But this is a pretty good one, and this is one that really is going to benefit the whole town. So I encourage you to vote yes. Thank you.
The Robinsons wish to speak. I think we're ready to vote. The motion is, and I announce, under Article 12, the improvements to the baseball field. And we will vote now. I'm not so fast, I'll close it. Eighty-three, yes, eight no.
Thank you.
Next, the Public Safety Special Purpose Stabilization.
I move that the town create a Public Safety Special Purpose Stabilization Fund pursuant to provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, for the purpose of funding required police training expenses associated with the Commonwealth Police Reform Act for the fiscal year 2025, public safety equipment expenditures that are otherwise eligible for borrowing in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 to 8, and public safety operational expenses, and transfer from the Public Safety Mitigation Receipts to establish actual funding in said account and further accept the last paragraph of Mass General Law, Section 40, Chapter 5B, and dedicate without further appropriation all development agreement Public Safety Mitigation Receipts received on or after July 1, 2022 for Public Safety Special Purpose Stabilization Fund.
The motion is made and seconded, and it is in the same line as on your motion sheet.
This is a lot of words or important accounting change. We have been written with Highland Commons that pays us public safety money every year, and that money goes into sort of a fund that we sort of created as a town that doesn't officially have a lot of laws around about how it can be spent. And so to make sure that there's not ambiguity around it, we are creating a special purpose fund that will now require a 231 in town and also now have rules around about where we can spend the money. And so even if someone is not a big fan of new little pots and pulls of money, I really encourage this to pass.
The Capitol Planning Committee recommends this. And the Finance Committee acknowledges the positive recommendation by the President. Anything further to comment? Do you want to wish to speak in this motion under Article 50? Here are no one, I will vote. Proceed to vote. This is a two-part process, it involves stabilization, finding money in stabilization support, which requires two days' go down the general law. At this time, I will ask you to start voting. I will vote for him. Eighty-three, yes, four no. Ninety-five, this is the day, can I expect your vote? Your motion passed. Before we have to take the last motion here, I will ask that you send in the people who are in the lines to get physical help, pick up chairs. There are still the candidates in the back of the halls. If there are any questions, I will just, I will just do that for all. And please do remember to contribute to public services. We make a lot of money, you know, and we really appreciate it.